This public hearing is now called to order. In accordance with the open government law, notices of this public hearing were sent to all main media outlets, all senators and stakeholders five days in advance on November 17, and a second notice was sent on November 22. We have two items on the agenda this afternoon. I'd like to welcome and thank Speaker Wampat for being here as well. And because we only have two items, I hope that we can get you guys in and out of here as quickly as possible. I want to thank you for coming during your lunch hour. We've had to schedule the hearing during this time because we are in a legislative session. And when we're in session, the only opportunity to have public hearings are during lunch and after 5:00. So we'll begin the hearing with the hearing the appointment of Terrence M. Brooks to be a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board for a term of three years from November 29, 2016 through November 28, 2019. So thank you, Attorney, for, again, for accepting the reappointment to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board, giving opportunity just to give your testimony, but also to say that your nomination is already, has been on the session agenda. But we cannot move your nomination forward without this public hearing requirement. So we're doing this to not only satisfy that requirement, but to give you an opportunity to express your reasons for being on the environmental protection agency board and some of the updates you can provide for this committee. Attorney?
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Chairman Rispicio and Speaker Wampat. It's an honor to be before you here today. As you know, I'm here to seek my third term, I believe, on the Public Utilities Commission. Uh, sorry. On the EPA. Formerly, I spent 20 years on the Public Utilities Commission. So I think that giving back to the island is a very important part of living here, and it's been my honor to do so over these years. I think the agency is actually starting to do some really good things now. According to the administrator, they've working on hiring six new personnel that will go a long way to increase environmental monitoring. They're getting an attorney to work on the statutes and regulations, many of which are up to 25 years old. And then they're working on other areas such as the vehicle emissions, standby generating, field inspections, and safe drinking water. So I think these hires are going to go a long way towards making the agency more effective and more efficient and more self-sustaining.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Speaker, you have any comments?
Well, I just wanted to basically find out, you've served on board. Have you seen or proposed any, you know, changes?
You know, changes are mostly, they're from the outside, by changes in laws, things like that. For instance, I think there was a recent bill regarding the recycling revolving fund. But to my understanding, that's something that's going to be going to the solid waste authority. So it's really not an EPA issue, or it won't be an EPA issue pretty soon. However, there are concerns that there won't be much money left in the recycling revolving fund because of some other laws that were passed. But...
One of the biggest concern with that bill that you talked about was that it would, I support the lifeline rate for residents to have trash pickup service, but my concern was to use the recycling revolving fund up to $750,000 per year to increase the participation in the solid waste program. That's not consistent with the spirit and intent of the recycling revolving fund. The recycling revolving fund was created to provide for recycling initiatives.
Yeah, exactly.
And so in that bill, you're going to provide for more participation for trash pickup. And even though there's a recycling component of that, I've even said, take the $750,000 and fund the, find out what it costs to do the recycling bins from the Guam Solid Waste Authority. And then if you're going to use the recycling revolving fund to provide a lifeline rate and a subsidy for those recycling bins, at least it's consistent with the recycling revolving fund. That bill is still in committee, and that the author agreed to have a roundtable with both EPA and the Guam Solid Waste Authority. So that's where that's at. There's been issues with recycling revolving fund and the administration of that fund and the transfers out of that fund. So we have a couple of bills on the agenda right now to make EPA have their own checking account.
That would be great.
So it's supposed to be separate apart from the general fund, but we've seen some cash transfers out over the years. And if until such time EPA actually has their checking account, only EPA can access that account.
That would be a great help.
And then along with posting all the transactions on the website to provide for continued transparency and greater accountability.
Yes, and they hired a PIO recently, so we'll be able to keep our website up, more up to date, I believe, as well. So thank you very much.
But thank you for your service on this EPA board.
It's my pleasure.
I know you spent a lot of long hours outside of 8 to 5:00 to have your hearings and administrative hearings.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So we'll get the committee report in time for us to vote on December 2nd. Thank you. So the next bill on the agenda is Bill 400, and it's an act to amend certain sections of the code relative to authorizing continuing appropriations to the Commission on Decolonization for the purpose of conducting an extensive public education and information program for fiscal years 15 and 16. And I'd like to recognize Speaker Wampat to provide an overview.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The reason for this bill is that a question was brought up during the task force, I mean, the commission's meeting in terms of continuing with the unexpendable balance to continue to be moved forward until such time that it's expended. The second concern, and it was a major discussion at the time when the governor wanted to move forward quickly with a plebiscite this year, and the concern was how will the three different task forces be able to expeditiously get their monies to be able then to have this comprehensive education program, knowing that following the procurement process will become prohibitive? And in the experiences that the task forces have had, by actually, the governor said he was going to try to see how they could expedite this, the process proved that even with the governor's people at the front office asking for three quotes and then the expiration of those quotes just pushed time further and further back, and the monies were never really made available. And so the language that you see throughout the sections here with, I mean, section one and section two, and, but in three different paragraphs, is that, you know, the language of notwithstanding 5 GCH, chapter 5, or any other law is needed to ensure then that the monies be expended exclusively for the programs, and then it must be approved by the members of COD. The other, again, would be an notwithstanding clause that these monies then will be expended until it's all used up. And the third is the requirement that this then, because the question is how do we keep track of this, is that there must be a complete record of the procurement and expenses, and that it must be published within the website within 30 days to try to show some transparency and accountability for the monies. So in this year's budget, we're able to by law go ahead and divide basically the monies to ensure that there's equal appropriations to the task forces and for the COD. But the language that we wanted to clarify, of course, is the waiver of the procurement in which a conversation I had with DOA and one of their staff, and she said she wanted to discuss that also with the executive director, but I don't see the executive director to verify whether this in fact had taken place. So that's what basically Bill 400 is all about.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We have five people that have signed up to testify. Sergeant Johnson, could you bring one more chair? I'll bring you guys all up at one time. I'd like to invite Rosario Perez, Mitchell Johnson, Christopher Francisco, Stacia Yoshida, and Mr. Jose Garido. So I received written testimonies from all of you. Thank you for taking the time and effort to do that. I'll recognize you at this time, beginning with, in the order you signed up, beginning with Ms. Rosario Perez.
Should we switch chairs? Sorry about that little delay. Buenas en hafa de Chairman Rispicio and Speaker Judith Wampat. This testimony is to present on behalf of the Social Work Student Alliance, or SWASA, of the University of Guam. SWASA thanks you for the opportunity to present testimony in support of Bill 433. My name is Rosario Perez, and I am a senior in the social work program. Bill number 433 is critical for the furtherance of the decolonization process, to secure the resources necessary for the three respective task force to deliver a quality education campaign on decolonization for our island. Having easily accessible and secured resources is key to providing the education needed. As part of being a student of the social work program, students are required to engage in variety, sorry, little nervous, thank you, various critical education and awareness techniques. A year ago, my classmates and I organized a project to register 500 eligible native inhabitants onto the decolonization registry. From the social work perspective, this is key in empowering and giving the people the inalienable right to self-determination. Collectively, it was very challenging to get people to register. There was much resistance, hesitation, and misinformation among college students and others in our community. I remember asking a student at UOG if they wanted to register for the decolonization registry. One student I asked said that they were afraid to register because they felt they were betraying their family members in the military. The student also shared that when the United States does, quote, "leave," that Guam does not have the capacity to sustain us or itself. I shared what knowledge I knew of the registry with this student, which led to a very long conversation about decolonization and what it means. I suggested to the student that they attend the different forums and the task force meeting to further their understanding. Fortunately, the student agreed to register. I was happy to know that the knowledge I knew was able to help one person to see that decolonizing means to no longer be a possession and to be self-governing. Unfortunately, others were more hesitant. It's for this reason that it is paramount to secure the resources to educate our community. It is because the bill greatly benefits our community, ensuring that decolonization of Guam, that the Social Work Student Alliance stands in support of this bill. Sidos masi.
Sidos masi. Mitchell Johnson, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman. Buenas en hafa de Chairman Rispicio and Speaker Wampat. This testimony is presented on behalf of the Social Work Students Alliance, or SWASA, at the University of Guam, and SWASA thanks you for this opportunity to present testimony in support of Bill 400-33. My name is Mitchell Charlemagne Johnson, and I am a senior in the social work program. Bill number 400-33 aims to extend the time to use the $150,000 allocated from the general fund appropriation in subsection B, one to conduct an extensive public education and information program by the Commission of Decolonization and the Free Association, Independence, and Statehood Task Force. I propose that there be no restrictions of time to accessing these funds for educational and informational purposes. By having no restrictions, it will allow these task forces to creatively and effectively provide more extensive means of educating the public to raise their awareness on independence, free association, and statehood. These more extensive means could include conferences, town hall meetings, commercials, media, mobile apps, and learning materials such as pamphlets and brochures. The enactment of this bill is of significant importance because it will maintain the momentum and increase the education on decolonization. By removing restrictions, it will allow the task force to reach out to a larger range of the population in a timely and effective manner. Keeping the time restriction could hinder the process of decolonization itself. As a citizen of the Federated States of Micronesia, I believe that Guam should realize decolonization. I grew up on an island where I could identify as an FSM citizen and be proud of it. When I came to Guam, I was surprised that people were identified as citizens of the United States. I did not see people identifying themselves as the people of Guam or have any sense of national pride rooted in Micronesia. Through decolonization, Guam would be able to identify itself as its own entity and not belonging to another. I want Guam and her Tramoral people to have the same sense of pride I feel as a citizen of the FSM. It is because the bill greatly benefits our community for ensuring the decolonization of Guam that the Social Work Student Alliance stands in support of this bill. Thank you. Kalangan and sidos masi.
Thank you so much also. I'd like to invite Mr. Francisco at this time.
Okay. Buenas en hafa de Chairman Rispicio and Speaker Wampat. This testimony is presented on behalf of the Social Work Student Alliance of the University of Guam. SWASA thanks you for the opportunity to present testimony in support of Bill 400-33. My name is Chris Francisco, and I'm a senior in the social work program. In my first year as a social work student, my community's class was tasked with registering residents for the upcoming plebiscite on decolonization. I had reservations about the purpose of the assignment and the eligibility of requirements of voters. Because of this, I chose to abstain from participating in the assignment. It has been a year since, and recalling my cohort's experiences with the public and the resistance and the vigilance I encountered, I realize now that many of the opinions held by some of the public mirrored mine. It has been through my educational career at the university and interactions with various groups who advocate for decolonization that my opinions have changed. I now see the need for the people of Guam to exercise our right to determine our future. I also realize that my past opinions were a product of misinformation and a Eurocentric educational system, and it is an unfortunate reality that many in our community have less than accurate information about the decolonization efforts. I believe that in order for the decolonization movement to gain any traction, and in order for the people at this island to make an informed decision, we must be provided with accurate information. The concept of self-determination is a core value of the social work profession, but equally important is the idea of informed consent. If we as a people are to effectively make an informed decision about our political future, I believe it is important that the choices before us and the implications of each choice be considered. Currently, Bill 400-33 has been introduced to eliminate the deadline placed on monies appropriated for public education on decolonization. Without this bill, the deadline for the disbursement of funds will lapse, and the opportunity for comprehensive public education and the dissemination of information will be lost. I hope that you will consider Bill 400-33 and allow the task forces the opportunity to access and utilize these funds by passing the bill into law. It is because the bill greatly benefits our community by ensuring the decolonization of Guam that the Social Work Student Alliance stands in support of this bill. Sidos masi.
Sidos masi. Look, we, I'd like to ask Ms. Yoshida to present your testimony at this time.
Buenas en hafa de Chairman Rispicio and Speaker Wampat. This testimony is presented on behalf of the Social Work Student Alliance of the University of Guam. SWASA thanks you for this opportunity to present testimony in support of Bill 400-33. My name is Stacia Yoshida, and I am a senior in the social work program. I am here today because I believe education is important. Without it, we cannot achieve greater things for our island. Recently, I have become involved in learning about decolonization. It is because of the educational outreaches and resources being provided by the Committee on Decolonization that I am able to have a better stance on the issue. This increased knowledge has helped me fill a stronger responsibility for our island. Education is knowledge, and knowledge is power. The strength given from decolonization education can build a stronger community. We would know what Guam is going through and how we can get involved and help support whatever it needs. There cannot be a sustainable island without a strong community. This public education and informational program has provided an increased awareness and participation on decolonization. I have seen the benefits of educating the community, and it is so empowering to hear the voices of our people speak up because it shows that they care. Our island is based on a collective society that can come together when we reach out and encourage each other. When people are informed and educated, they are encouraged to participate in the community. When they participate, it can then encourage others to also join and be an active member of this island we call home. To allow the funds for the purposes of decolonization to lapse out of being used would be an injustice to Guam. By providing equal and full access to the funds, we can break the cycle of an uninformed community and work towards a stronger, decolonized community. It is because the bill greatly benefits our community, ensuring the decolonization of Guam, that the Social Work Student Alliance stands in support of this bill. Sidos masi.
Sidos masi also. Can I just get you to sign the...
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Garido to present his testimony.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
And Madam Speaker. I know that the committee, to hear this bill, is incomplete this afternoon. I'm not sure what is the reason why, what is the reason for their absence, but I would be very happy to have seen them, to actually see them being here to listen to us.
I don't think pointing their absence is necessary. This is a public hearing, and they...
I understand, but I'm here to represent the task force and the association.
Yeah.
This is a common, a common evidence of the lack of seriousness of some of our officials, of the government of Guam and elected officials as well. I do regret that you, being involved here and actually serious about this issue, are two of the people that are not elected to run again. Unfortunately, I don't know what to say to that, but I'm sorry about that. I read, my name is Susayul Joagarido, and I am here to support this bill. And I would like to say that I was once a student of the University of Guam, and I took political science. And I can tell you right now, one of the basic problems with our students and our people having the lack of knowledge with regards to self-determination and colonization is because of the attitude of the political science department. Those professors up there owe Guam a great deal of responsibility to explain to the students that Guam is a non-self-governing territory, and the native inhabitants is a non-self-governing people, period. When I look to this bill, sir, and I'm, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to see if we could have a little bit of an explanation as to what's the meaning of line nine on the first page? Line nine?
Nine.
Mm-hmm. I highlight it saying that no funds allocated herein shall be expended for personnel.
That's the original language, and what you see, the underscore, is what I'm amending.
And, but those, that is not going to be there later on?
No, I mean, it's in the original language already. But what, so what you see that's underscored will be the new language. However, in any bill form, if there is a discussion, like in the public hearing, and even a discussion on the floor, that yes, that that sentence itself could be amended and could be deleted.
Okay. I just want to have a little...
But the rule here normally is, is that when we're going to amend a bill, we have to show the original language, and then if we want to delete anything, then there'll be a line straight across the word or the sentence, and if we want to add new, we have to underscore the new language.
Well, I just want to have a little understanding that maybe that was intended to mean personnel of the Commission on Decolonization Office?
Yes, you're right.
And not personnel of the task forces?
That's true. You're right.
Okay. The other one is that the funds shall be expended exclusively as advised by the task forces and approved by both of the COD. That can present a problem because the task force's chairman are members of the COD. And so if that was advised by the task force, I hope that I won't see any disapproval of that advice, being that three chairmans are also commissioners, although I approve The next one is that I'm looking at the language here that, that the funding shall not lapse and shall continue to be available until fully expended. There's no sunshine, what do they call that sunshine provision on that? Until it's fully spent?
Yes.
Okay. A complete record of procurement and expenditure shall be published in the website within 30 days. I kind of like, want to ask, 30 days of what?
From, where it says...
Is it 30 days from the expenditure, after you spend it?
You're right, and that's a good question because we can clarify that then. You're right, that, you know, it could be from, depending, could be the initial request that that will be publicized.
Okay.
Versus waiting until all the monies have been expended, and then you publicize it. So...
My understanding is that when you spend the money within 30 days, you have to put that on the website?
Yes.
What would you prefer the language be?
That was my next question, you're right, is that, what do you think, because you sit in the commission and, you know, as a task force member, that would it be best that, that it gets publicized as soon as the request is approved? Or do you think that it would be when all the expenditures have been made?
No, I think this is good. It's transparency.
That's what it is. We want to make sure it's transparent and accountable.
Maybe within 30 days plus five days, greatest period or something. The problem with that, though, Madam Speaker, is that each task force do not have a procurement officer. And I know that during the meetings that occurred in the COD, there was a request for the government or the governor to identify one expert from the procurement office to provide that assistance to the task forces, unless, of course, they are a member of the task force. task forces who are expert in the procuring process. But I can assure you that we're not expert in the procurement process and there are certain procedures that have to be followed before the expenditure of funds. So we're not expert on that. So in hope that we're not going to violate anything, I'm, maybe that is a discussion that need to be discussed in the meeting and not in the public hearing.
You're right. And that was actually brought up, that when we were going to start this, that one, a person who is in charge of procurement from DOA will come in and make a presentation to the three task forces to let them know what the loss stipulates, what the dollar amount is and all that, and what we really should follow. However, there is a caveat instead with this is that we are, that's why I used the notwithstanding, is that then we do not need to really have to wait to go out and, you know, follow the whole bid process, the bidding process, because we're talking about, you know, a smaller amount and because it has to be done expeditiously. So we're not totally taking away the procurement process, but making only an exception to this particular commission because of the, you know, to expeditiously, you know, start the whole, you know, education campaign.
That's about it. I guess we'll deal with unforeseen causes or consequences of the bill. I was just curious that your name is the only name appearing on this bill.
Only because I had to do it as quickly as I can and not because I wasn't able to get others to co-sponsor.
And lastly, before I--
But I'll make sure that Senator Respechio is a second co-sponsor as a task force member.
The reason why I jokingly said, "Don't point out anyone's absence" is because we still need support for this bill on the floor.
Well, I'm a person that also see the absence of elected officials in any public hearing to be something that I am concerned about.
Before we leave this thought on the 30 days, which appears three times in the bill, if the speaker will agree, we could just work with that same sentence, but reconstruct it so it reads, "A complete record shall be published on the COD's website within 30 days of such procurement and expenditures." So you just reworded that?
Yes, that's true.
Their intent is that 30 days within the procurement expenditures, but by moving things around, I guess that satisfies your question, 30 days of what? But I also want to thank you, Mr. Garrido, for--
Well, lastly, I would like to say publicly in TV to Guam that I'm very appreciative of the students being here testifying on such a very important issue for us. And I would like to personally thank the gentleman from Chuuk--
No, Ponpe.
Who has the--
Ponpe.
Ponape?
Ponpe, yes.
Who has the understanding of what a sovereign citizen is among us colonized people. And I thank you for saying that.
And also, thank you, Mr. Garrido, for your work over the years, over the decades, and your struggle to hang on to this idea and belief and inherent right of our Chamor people to freely determine their own destiny. And I recognize your efforts over the years and your passion and encourage you to continue. And I know that the speaker and I will continue this fight in whatever capacity we, don't have to be elected to be involved, and we're here. And I also want to recognize the UOG students. You certainly make your professor very proud. I know you've made the president of the university very proud because Dr. Underwood peeped in in the back and he gave you the thumbs up. So thank you for your participation. And if the speaker has no closing comments, this bill will be considered heard and we'll work with the other members of the legislature to get it on the agenda.
Thank you. I would like an opportunity, if I may, because I want to publicly also thank you, Mr. Garrido, for all the work that you've done. And, you know, you have been the Lone Ranger, so to speak, with the task force and free association. And I appreciate your perseverance, of course, and your steadfastness to continue with the work and have recruited somebody to assist you. I've learned a lot from you being on the board because you've been in longer than I have. And I definitely have learned a lot from you and I appreciate it, the three different task forces and what they need to do. So, you know, I will become a member, of course, of our community and I definitely will continue to become just as involved, if not more. I'd like to personally thank also Rosario Perez. I think that the statement that you've indicated here, especially when you went out to try to register students and you saw the resistance, the hesitation, and the misinformation, that's exactly what it is outside in our community. And with that misinformation, it makes it really very difficult to move forward in what the whole commission and decolonization is a task to do. And with that, I know that with Stacia, you did say that, you know, education is powerful. The information that we have is very powerful when we use it, you know, in the whole purpose of what that information that we have to inform and to educate and more importantly is to get our people to participate in the community. So I thank you for your testimony. Mitchell, I love the fact too that you've mentioned different measures or means of how then we can go out to let the people know. You know, we're just not limited to the typical, what we call either conferences or town hall meetings, but the group were actually considering that they wanted to do, of course, commercials, you know, mobile apps, you know. So that, of course, will, you know, come from a lot of the younger generation who have, are, you know, very skillful at. And I really, really appreciate, you know, your comments as well and appreciation for the fact that, you know, here you are, you live in Guam, you're going to school here, and I'm sure you've already considered Guam, you know, your home unless you actually decide to go back to Ponpe to surf, you know, your independent, you know, your state rather, that you truly can, you know, understand and appreciate, of course, the people of Guam and what we should be, that we should have pride in the fact that, you know, we are, you know, Chamor people, we are a part of, you know, Micronesia, and that we should be proud of it. So I think you're going to make your people, you know, proud of that. So I thank you as well for that. And last but not least, Chris, I love the fact, of course, that, you know, when you say that past opinions, misinformation out there in this quote-unquote Eurocentric educational system has been sometimes the downfall of, you know, countries that have been colonized. And I love the fact that Mr. Garrido, every time he talks about this whole decolonization process, is that the very first thing we need to do is to decolonize our minds, our attitudes. So I truly appreciate your comments. And I think it's wonderful. I smiled when I saw the four of you coming up here to testify and, you know, taking a strong position on this and even though there may be some hesitancy in the very beginning as a course requirement. But the way I see universities, you know, I mean, I admit, I graduated, you know, in high school in mainland and rather, the US, I'm not going to say the mainland, I always get criticized for saying that, but in the US and went to college there. And I have to admit that when I was in college, we were protesting. I was protesting in the steps of the Capitol, you know, in the White House. And so I came home thinking, "That's what we're supposed to do." Because, you know, the university is supposed to incite or motivate, you see, for you to question what's going on and be out there, yes, being an activist in a sense for what you think, you know, should happen in your community and our society. And having you here has restored my faith in our university as well than that we are then getting our students involved. And I thank your professor for, even though it started out as an assignment, I hope now that it has ignited, you know, that desire to go out there and, you know, teach and educate and bring more awareness, you know, as we go through this process. So I leave this legislature, of course, with, you know, feeling really good that, you know, we're turning it over now and putting it in your hands to continue the work that Mr. Garrido and Senator Respechio, you know, and others who have continued to, you know, nurture this and walk it through and get it to that point. So thank you very much for that, for your appearance and testimony this afternoon. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your very eloquent comments. Thank you, everybody. This hearing is adjourned.
So are you okay with that amendment?
Yes, yes.